... the songa ya Nathan Ilawa. Ole... fa tonu fa'olo, fa... fa'olioli tofinga fionga kovanga. Akalo fa'akula suna Nathan ngi kayao. Ole kuakula vongone ngi fe'me sausamanga lumulmoka. Ania makanga le fa'akua ilo ilon, fa'falon.
Tayao manuia, tayao tatuwa. Fa'talo fa'atums wa'afapa'ia ole li'i fa'ola. Bi'ia pele alofoma le angan lay ole tatuwa. Tapa'au laangi nei tayao atengu fe'e. Ote tautasi malau'ava malau'fa'alo alo'tele. Atulou atu malu ole maute'otama ole atenu. Fio lafionga le prestene t'au'olo ma'ana ya'fruun. Sui prestene ya mangalay lo'ovi. Malu pa'ia ole t'au fionga senatoa. Tupufoi motama li'i ole atenu. Avtaitale le fionga le taita'i komiti senatoa. Malau'ava noa nei tayao. With your indulgence, honorable senators, if I may proceed with my testimony in English. Good morning, honorable president of the senate, honorable vice president, chairman, honorable senators. My name is Nathan Ilawa and I'm from the village of Leone and Pawaiai. It's with great honor that I appear before you this morning to answer your questions. I feel the Lord has blessed me with an opportunity presented to me by the honorable governor, Pula Ali'i Nicola Pula, and the honorable lieutenant governor Pulu Ii Junior, to serve our people of American Samoa with the Department of the Marine and Wildlife Resources. In my brief time as the acting director with the department, I have found a highly dedicated and capable staff who are both hardworking and care very deeply for the protection, management, and sustainable use of our natural resources, including our fisheries, which are the lifeblood of our local economy and deeply rooted with our fa' Samoa. I thank the Lord for this opportunity to return to ASG to serve the people of our territory and I thank you honorable senators once again for the opportunity.
Of'tai. Ya'ole suna ya'Nathan. Oh, ol'eva nga nga'aluwenga iye, m'kanga'aluwenga le marine wa'ala. Ng'au'ua'ikolomai famo'mo'unga. Oh, awa'ongama, m'kanga'aluwengas a te'ngai maiya. Otke mi'ee la kuakula vongone akomiki. Ni'avongone fionga presen'i mo'ufisili po'angifautuanga.
Of'tai chairman, ngi'ava vongoa. V'ka'ava pa'ile ele ele nomination ala kovanga ele marine and wildlife. But I listened to the comments by members of the house yesterday. They highly recommend you, you know. But this is enough for me to believe that you can do the job. Are you related to Paramount Chief Moma in P'angap'ang?
Nela, yes.
Ah. So one more question. What's the name for, what's a palangi name for makamalu?
South ice.
So, the billfish, swordfish, billfish?
What, what, what is it? Oh, pink eye. Thank you chairman, I'm done.
Sorry.
Avtaita'ava le vongoa chairman.
Yeah.
La suna... A fionga senkua. Mai...
Mongkiya.
Mongkiya.
Avtaita'ava fionga taytai komiki. Ol'eva nga e malanga mai mai Amerika. Eke'ongufoi Amerika. Fialau ka'osanga'ala vamofa'ideonge po'umalai lu.
Ova'ya.
Ova'ya.
Thirty-seven?
Nanga'au Samoa, au Samoa. Ila'au Samoa, maka'i dong. Ay'ala'ula'oe desa'ula'oe ngang'ang'ua lakui'oe. Ah. Ah'olo fa'Samoa. Ke'lo fa'Samoa.
Amene, atu fialolo la fa'Samoa.
Wa'au Samoa. O'makua Samoa. Rukamar Samoa. Rukingar Samoa. Ya'va'ila e. Sa'fa'anga'ui idonge. Sa'fa'anga'ui idonge.
Yeah, yes.
Id'ofanga mai le, fa'anga mai le fa'de ke'le le'ongae. Ede ngaka'ya'ka'au le'au ka'ala ku'a au fa'fo'anga moka. Ila'au di'si ka'ba'li'oe le'onge. Sa'au au ma'anga le'onge, ah. Ila'au m'k'omaka. Si fe'me sauteng'au l'ol'ol'onge. Fe'me sauteng'au le'onge, fe'me sauteng'au malai lu. Wa'ame'anga ta'ongae mu'mbu'a au, au kamfa'anga'ua le'onge. Au kamfa'anga'ua, fa'singue le. Ede sa'au ma'ka'ala'inga la'au m'ku'a. Ah, ya. Ka'oku'anga ma'onganga'aluwenga le, au'e lo. Nanga'au mu'ongi'ia, eloko fa'anga, ta'ma fa'anga'ua la atenu. Pe'ko'uisoi fu'e Amerika, ko'malanga mai. Ifavta'i kovanga va'aku'ufinga le ya'oe, ay ka'oku'anga ma'oe? Ka'oku'anga ma'oe le. Ngaka'ifali'ao ma'ko'ufanga'iku'a. Fia'mo si amu fe'usua'i. Ke'manmalamanme'akau le amu fe'usua'i. Wa'au isin'anga me'akau nga'ema'n malama'yo ngaka'ifali'ao amu fe'usua'i. Ole koe'mo si makamalu pe'ka'ongu akunpina sieni. La'au fa'palani'ao makamalu, ol'makamalu. Ya'oe, ay ka'oku'anga ma'oe? Okokoi fe'usua'i o'oe le, fa'sun'ua fe'usua'ia nga'ma' Samo t'itu. I'oe fe'fe'le me'le fa'fa'ilele ka'ufa'usua'i o'oe. Ol'onge ya'aa.
Yeah.
Ya'aa o'ye ngi'me'anga mai le esetanie'sua'la moka. Ta'oku'eng fe'usua'ua, au'e lo. Ay famu'ya le ku'a l'upu'le mai. L'ofonge le ku'a l'upu'le fu'e, kalabou ke'le oe. Ka'oku'anga lay lau, kaita'inga m'kanga'aluwenga le. Ah.
Yeah.
Ya? Famu'ya le ku'a, bo'omala au t'itu.
Lo'ava vongoa, a fionga senkua'olo.
Chairman, ya'sa'au ngofungo'ava pe'le sa'au... Sa'au kala'fa'ia ngi kayao. Ya'ala'anga le'ua ka'ua fa'ase fa'ase fulu monkupule ng'os'ua se'ukuma'lo. Ya'ole'onge ya'ia nga'lo'wekasi ya'ole'ikuma'lo. Ya'ka'onge, ole'alo le kamale ya'Nathan Ilawa. Ya'ole'alo le fa'singue ya'ku'ikelin fa'ivai, ya'malea fio'anga. Ya'mo'inga fa'ma'ongi le sa'anganga'ava fionga senatoa. Ya'ke'le longa longanga va'ale m'kanga'aluwenga le. Ede ilania'ufisili pa'ole me'ole ya'ka'oku'akulmaoka'ava ya'ka'fal fia'anga lo ka'osionga. Ya'ole ngisile'alo le'ikuma'lo fe'inga ka'oku'anga'ala ngimkanga'aluwenga wa'ale'ua ka'aku'ava'ile. Le'afou'ikelin efisili ya'ku'foi ku'langa'ole seabed mining le, sa'usekaiminga wala'atule'ao suna Nathan ekesu mai. Ka'ua kasiala'ufisili, what are the biggest challenges of facing here the department? Trying to manage the Department of Marine and Wildlife here in American Samoa. Any challenge of fa'fika'uli o'oe lo'inga ke'inga?
Of'tai, on'tu'itu. Honorable, there were many challenges facing the department. I believe right now the most pressing one is the seabed mining as well as some of the changes that we've experienced from some of the orders from President Trump that affect our fisheries here in American Samoa. I think I would like to have an opportunity to respond more on the seabed mining at a later time. I apologize, I haven't... I've been working with my deputy and as well as the staff at the department to put together our position to support both the governor and lieutenant governor as well as the resolution from the Fono to support that position to oppose the seabed mining. And as far as the fisheries, I think that's an ongoing problem as we try to ask the federal government for help in protecting our exclusive economic zone from foreign fishers who are just outside our waters. And I think a big challenge is asking the Coast Guard to please provide us with a vessel to patrol our waters to make sure that these foreign boats are not fishing in our 200 mile zone.
Thank you, of'tai, of'tai Nathan. Ya'ole pa'ole le fa'kuanga malu'akualaloka'ia ke'oe. Fe'mal fa'ma'ongi'ava ya'ka'fal fia'anga'ala ol'maoka'ia yate'oe. Ya'fe'mal fa'ma'ongi'anga'aluwenga. Ole transparency and accountability, those are the most important thing. Ma'ua le no'fo'le lay ole atenu motanga. Ya'of'tai chairman, mul'evano.
Lo'ava vongoa, ku'anga'ka'au.
Of'tai mul'evano chairman. Ari Nathan. Devka'ava ya'ku'ikanga'inga ya'Nathan. Ola' suna'ala'anga le flame fox.
Yeah, yes, it's our family business.
Ya'au'foi Samo ipava'ya. Ke'le'ke'me'ka'ale kakusa'ale. Kakusa'ka'ale ifa'ere emaiya irima ka'upunga. Eka'onge'akalunga'ka'ia ya'us'ke'emi'ala'anga'le'ua pa'ole ta'vonge e ma'ua la'us'unga. Onga'ke'emi'la'ka'usaka'ale onga'la'afe'ua i'anga'ma'akupia. Iku'a le me'le ya'ile le afu'ile la'ua ifa'foi ta'outa'outa. Fa'ulmole fokuanga fa'ulmole ka'oku'anga'ka'asa'afa pe'oe te'pa'ava'ia. Wa'au sa'au ka'oku'ya ka'oku'anga ma'oe le kulanga'anga. Ede efisili ng'ero longa'aluwenga'makulanga'lo ya'ile lo kamfai me'ele kofile. La'ausa'pa'ia fo'ipaa'ava'ia i'anga'la'anga'fa'ale konge fe'anga'ala'unga'me'oe'oe. Ede ch'ami'le ya'ma'ko'pula'ase fuso'angi fo'ye. E'mauak, lo'aya ke'le'ekiki, ke'ro'ia fe'anga'ava'ia'oe. Ya'kulanga'mai'ole ole malu. Ya'ol'eva'fo'anga'efu'ol'eva'fo'anga'ego'ye.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, nela.
Ya'ole efisili ng'ao, of'tai chairman.
Lo'ava vongoa. Chairman, mul'evano.
Akalo fa'Ku'Nathan. Ede esu'omala'ma ke'le'anga'ka'ifali. Eh, onga'au'ole'oki'ki'lo pe'yo'auka'fa'ima'me'au ka'ula'au. Pa'onganga'me'au sa'au ku'akualaloka'ua le eti'fa'anga'aluwenga. Ole'anga'aluwenga le nga'fa'ia departments for e'ele. N'ankren ba'anga'uma'le. Ole'ala'ufa'kuanga. Ede esu'efisili, a'ole'me'le wukupu. Nathan ku'aku'yo'Kafka. Ol'kapeno'ole kamalini, ah. Lei'ke'le P'angap'ango'oe'ofolai ng'oma'eku. E'si la'au ye'ele. La'au ye'ka'ole invasive species. Ole'me'le wukupu. Onga'au'kule malu, ah, ba'anga'ia okou kapeli la'au. Ole'me'le wukupu. Ede ipeli'awa'aususolo fa'asolo'aku'ala'au. Ay ku'api'oku'afka'fa' Nathan. La'anga'ia'uki'ki'oe imounga ma'me'oe wa'ali'ao. Ole'mku'a ke'le'ala'ulem fe'kapeli. Ay'ola'ufa'kuanga. Ya'pe'afa'aku'ingu. Eh, pe'afa'pe'la'kari'ala'ka'arsa. Ya'alo'au'akan'oku'unga oke'au ke'le. Oke'manga'ku oke'ila'usunga le kulanga'le. Sa'au nga'ku'akualaloka'ua. Ay'ke'le'oke'file'ala ka'oku'akalakunga. Onga'au'la'au ye'kukumai kongole'aku'ola'au foku. Ya'anga'kesi'la'fe'ia. Ede wasusolo fa'asolo'aku'ole b'ap'e'el'ola'ula'anga'ole ya'ng'okaku. E'ena'me'fale'ala'ka'ua kimusho. Usa'ole ay ku'aku'yo'Kafka. Na'ea'anga'lu'e. Ole'me'le'anga'ia departments, nga'ala'aku'a fe'ia. Ay'ele'oma'uku. Ah'oke'lo'aku'ingu'makul'ingu'makalale'oe fe'ia. Ya'ka'oku'inga esu'elingi Nathan fa'mo'mo'ole, mol'fa'mo'mo'ole. Pakama'ia'ole. Eme'ye'kukumai le iku'a'fale'ao. M'unga. Malau'falon'olo, ai'moni'ke'le'nges. Of'tai chairman.
Lo'ava vongoa le a'la'fionga senkua'oto.
Of'tai mul'evano, t'afala fionga president. Ole'ama'ula ta'ufa'atu ya'ae tasia'ase efisili Nathan ma'watu se'of'tai da'va'fionga. Onga'aluwenga ne'le'ua va'atu ya'anga'va'ak. Of'tai'atu ya'ala'ula atenu. Onga'aluwenga fa'pe'ele to'otere nisio'ala'ula atenu Samoa ifia'fe'ia'efai pe'anga'va'ak fo'efai. Ale'of'tai'atu le'ua va'atu yo'le'rasamewa leva'ne'ata'anga'aluwenga'ia. Ede pa'tua tu'ua itato'ye mai mai fa'foi fe'inger'anga'le ne'ia. O'ig'mala'va'lo Samoa le'lemchanga'aluwenga'le lemchanga'aluwenga. Ete'fe'ia'fe'ia'ila fionga'ele itete'ofinga'ila fionga'ko'mana. Oto'fia'ala'va'fionga'ote'le masani le'oe ya'ote'na'ala'ua tu'ua'ap'ala'utama'ala tu'ua'onga'patasi. Ma'tu'of'tai da'va'fionga'ia fe'fa'ma'ongi'anga'aluwenga. Na'omia ya'oto'ua'yo'fo'mai'oe fe'ata'onganga'aluwenga. Ya'walu'ma'na'io'le atenu. Pa'ole she'au'ususania'atu tulanga'atu mta'au'ku'le'ama'ma'ua'ye. Pa'anku'ul'ua'atu m'na'ma'ua nei tayao of'tai.
Senkua, ma'ote.
Wa'ama'le ma'ua'ra'vo'te'misau'no'nisina'ala'usi'ime'ala ka'au'au Nathan. Ya'ede koe'ka'ua'va'ku'ap'ol'mekia'anga'va'ape'ke'le'anga'va'pa'ole me'ka'ua'uma'ula vanoa eksesa'ua surva'ile fia'anga'lo. Eh, ka'usil'lei'ya'va'maku'lo'ngu'inga. Ya'va'it'sa'alu'ngu'le'le pa'ua'ya'ku'ai. Pa'ole me'ot'plasing'le'ua m'anga'ome'oe. Fa'ma'ku'ya'le ku'a pa'fa'ite'fan fia'anga'la fionga president m'na'ma'ula'ole. Or'moka. Ya'ala'anga'le'sti mai'au nis'efionga senkua. Ya'fa'alu'la'ma'ua pe'afa'pe'uma'as'au'nuanga, of'tai.
Lo'ava vongoa le a'fionga senkua'ya'kong'yo'la.
Tay'ala'va'fionga taita'komiti mul'evano. Nathan, ole'ali'fa'ya'oe male'tanga'ata esu'afa'ya Sandy Ilawa re'asa. Te'letousanga'ofinga'aluwenga Department of Commerce and Malu.
He's my father.
Ol'utama' Sandy Ilawa.
Nela.
Yeah, they. Ole'ta'ua'ya'upepa'tustusia'oe ole vice chair, ole WPR and FMC, the fisheries. Eh, Ila'ufaitau nisio tal'anga tal'ua'ine'io'lo'ao'ia'ini fet'ena'inga'le va'ole. Ole, ole komisile'ya male'tato' motanga'aluwenga le'ole'aa'efori'fo'fo'we'efata'tai. Ona'ola'toufa'ai'unga i'me'ata'ufanga'otanga'ma mava'afanga'ot. E'afi'ya'ele fishing fleet al'tato'atenu, es'au. Afai'la'ole ave'ao'ama taita'i ole motanga'aluwenga le. Ole'as'au ta'afie'le fet'ena'ei'lo tulanga'fa'ataitai. Ma'lo tulanga'fa'avi'sche'ole va'anga'le'ona'ole fet'ena'inga'ifai'unga'ia'matulanga ile pui'pu'inga'ole nga'ta'ifale. Ma'me'ata'ufai.
Senators, the Western Pacific Regional Fishery Management Council, which I used to be an employee of, I'm no longer employed by them. I spent a number of years with, with the council's advisory panel, just as an advisor. But now that I am back with the Department of Marine and Wildlife, we are looking to make decisions independent of the council that are best for American Samoa. As far as the fishing, there are a number of our alia fishing boats that are in desperate need of repair. The deputy and myself have been working to utilize funds that are available immediately to provide support for those alia fishing boats as well as providing access and making sure that access for our fishermen is always available. As for the larger fishing fleet, we're also very supportive of our American Samoa Longline Fleet, which provides tuna for the cannery. It's, it's because of the, the American Samoa Longline Fleet, excuse me, that the cannery is able to provide very important contracts for our US military and also the school lunch across the nation.
You're talking about the Albacore, the Albacore tuna fish that the military and the school lunch program purchase?
That's correct.
Of made in America.
Yes.
Requirements. Okay, ele'oto'invovla'ole Fishery Council?
As the director of DMWR, I will now be the designated council member for the governor on the council as tautasi was before me.
Okay. So, all right, and what is your... Ol'alu'ta'ofi ilo se'apsapaya ete'se'apsapaya'la'ole fa'au'au wi'na'ole tulanga'manifou'fuanga. M'ole fa'au'au wi'na'ole fa'alele'ina'ole local fishing, longlining, local fishing fleet. Malona ta'ua'ile'ati na'ea'ati'ole tato'fale tu'ua'ia tu'apan'elo'ia'ine'ele starkest.
Yeah, that's a, thank you Senator. Our longline fleet, the American Samoa one, not the foreign boats that deliver to the cannery. Those are fishing vessels owned by American Samoa and families. And so, as I had alluded to, it's important for us to support American Samoa fishers, especially the ones who support the cannery, which is our main economic driver. So, as the, the head of the department, God willing, I think it will be our mission to support all of the Samoan, American Samoa fishermen, whether they have small boats or the larger longline fishing boats because they all support our economy and our way of life. I just look forward to the opportunity to, looking at some of these foreign boats that are flooding the market with cheap fish that may be a detriment both to our American Samoa fishermen as well as our locally owned businesses that rely on our local boats to buy fish for their stores and restaurant.
Ila'mama lama'efia'ni alia'lo'ao'ia'ine'ao'ao. Ng'alulu'ele, ele, lei'ale'ile tuna, for catching the tuna. Efia'ngi alias t'atou'lo'ao'ia, the local alias.
Thank you Senator. There are currently eight alia that are actively fishing here for Tutsuila. There's...
Is that bottom fishing or tuna fishing?
Mixed, mixed trips. So, majority of our alia fishermen do both trolling for pelagic tuna species and billfish as well as bottom fish for species especially like the velo and pol'malau and bottom fish. There are less boats active in Manua currently, so we hope to help the Manua alia fishermen get back on their feet.
Away, are they falling off their feet in Manua?
I believe the difficulties, I was, recently had the opportunity to travel to Taua and also Ofu and Ol'usenga to meet with the fishermen about three weeks ago. And there are a number of challenges that are preventing them from, from fishing. I believe number one is the rationing of fuel and fishermen are only allowed a single voucher per week and they have to decide whether to use it for their boat or for their car. So, the other issue is that the lack of infrastructure to repair the boats that are in need of service, both the hull of the vessel as well as the motors. I think our department has the capability to assist the fishermen in getting their boats seaworthy again. But we also want to avoid just giveaways and so there will be incentives attached to the submission of data to improve the work that we do with the stock assessment with the federal government and so forth.
I noticed you didn't mention anything about the storage of their catches because there is no infrastructure or facility in Manua. So if they catch their fish, they either eat it fresh or lose it. You didn't mention that and is that, can that be one of the projects that... Because in my opinion, it's one of the more important things because if they cannot store their fish in ice or frozen, they're not going to be able to earn a livelihood out of that fish because there's only, I think, 250 people left in Manua so they cannot sell their fish too efficient, efficiently. What is your attitude as a director if you should be approved with respect to the National Sanctuary programs and the national sanctuaries in American Samoa? Do, do you support their existence as part of the management of our marine and wildlife resources?
Thank you for the question Senator. I believe that the National Marine Sanctuary is a very valuable component of management of our nearshore fisheries. I believe the sanctuaries such as Fongatele Bay have great value. I do have concerns about proposed deep water sanctuaries which would prevent our commercial fishers from targeting fish in the deeper waters of our EEZ. And if you would allow me to elaborate just a bit on, on that.
You're talking about the Rose Island?
So with the respect to the Rose Atoll Marine National Monument, one of the things that I had advocated for before I became the director was a balance of management. And right now, the current restriction for commercial fishing extends all the way to 50 nautical miles, meaning that our locally owned longline fleet owned by Samoan families have to transit sometimes hundreds of miles to try to catch the fish around the other side of the, the zone. I am a strong believer that the Marine National Monument provides very important protection to the sea turtles and seabird nesting sites as well as the coral reef around Rose Atoll, Muliava Marine National Monument. However, if the boundary of the monument was reduced to 12 nautical miles, it would allow our locally owned fishing boats much more space to chase the fish, which is then delivered to our cannery, which is very important for our economy, while also continuing to protect all of the nearshore coral reef, bird and turtle habitats within Rose Atoll.
Okay, now that you've gone through that, let me ask you this. Does the Department of Marine and Wildlife Resources have any data on how much fish has been caught in the areas outside of the 12-mile zone that you are advocating before the Marine Sanctuary was established? The reason for my question is this. Prior to our setting the 50-mile zone, it was already a federally protected area at 50 mi, at 50 miles. So what we did was just follow the borders. Even though the borders before were round, we made it the square on the 50-mile square. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we didn't do anything new. We just followed what was there before. And what was there before, nobody objected about it. It's only objected when the sanctuary was established along the boundaries of that federally protected island. And so what, what data do you have to show that there is actually fish that our local fishing fleet are not able to catch within the other 38 miles, even if it's opened up at this time?
That's a very good question, Senator. And what we do have prior to the establishment of the Marine National Monument for Rose is a series of annual stock assessment, fishery evaluation reports that were completed by NOAA National Marine Fisheries as well as the Fishery Council, which gives us a very accurate amount of fish caught within our EEZ. Unfortunately-
That applies to the total EEZ, does not just apply to this 38 miles?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. It's harder to gauge exactly how many fish were caught in the 38 miles that we are, that I was, have advocated for. But there are definitely, the stock assessment has shown that these migratory fish, the stock is healthy. It is not overfished or experiencing overfishing. And I believe the most important thing for us to realize about boxes in, in deep water areas such as Rose Atoll, the fish that our local longline fleet are targeting are highly migratory fish that are not staying in one box. They are, they are moving through-
Which is exactly the point, isn't it? Because even if the tuna species go into that 38-mile zone, they do not live and stay in that 38-mile zone. They do migrate to other areas where they could be caught.
That's correct.
All right, all right. But generally, as an institution, it is your testimony that you support the National Marine Sanctuaries, but you have some concerns that you feel you need to address at a later time?
That is correct, Senator. I do support the National Marine Sanctuary's mission as well as their sanctuaries around Tuzuila and Onu'ua. As I stated, I just have some questions about the efficacy of large deep water closures for, especially when our economy is so dependent on these tuna that are delivered to our local cannery.
If you're successful in this, we would be, the Senate would be interested in your findings and sharing with us how you feel that these things may be restructured for improving, not only, you know, assistance to our local fishery, but also in maintaining the preservation of these very vulnerable areas. Okay, I have 10 more questions, please. And super alia, you've heard that before, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
You're familiar with this program?
Yes, sir.
And where is the super alia today?
Senator, as far as I know, one of the vessels has been constructed and delivered to American Samoa. This is a Department of Commerce project, but I know we will be working closely with Director Peitaya and her staff because of the overlap of jurisdiction for, for fishing. I believe more vessels are being constructed and are due to be delivered to American Samoa. I apologize for not having more information on the project details. I have a lot of information about the genesis or the origin of the project, having worked for the council when it was developed by our Fisheries Development Officer. But as it was handed off to the Department of Commerce, I am not as familiar. And I, I look forward to having more information available and providing it to you in as much detail as possible at a later time, if that pleases the committee.
We would be interested in what your part will be. And that vessel has been delivered, was delivered more than a year ago. And I have not seen that boat even gone out fishing one day yet. So what, that's the reason for my question. Where is it? What's it doing? If it was delivered a year ago, why is it still sitting in the harbor? So we will be interested in finding out when and how this boat is going to be operating. It's a very large project. Nathan, thank you very much for answering my questions very frankly. And I believe the knowledge and experience you've expounded on in this hearing gives me the confidence that you would make a darn good director for this department. And I hope you will be successful in this vote. Thank you very much.
Fa'tai.
Wa'ala fionga senkua, ku'ya'ua lulu. Tai mo'la'ua va'nuu'a. La'usunga le chaitai committee, naiten. Oh, ku'ya'ua lulu'ua ma'nuu'a.
Hello, Senkua.
E'uianga sa'nuu'a le fionga sen'to'a ya tao'ola. Ngali lu'ase la'utu nga tao'ula lulu'ua. Aae, o'tanga tao'ula. O'tanga tae fa'amo'e mo'e le sami le'a. E fa'ango'ota aae. Ku'ya'utuli'uli'ula le, le fale le'a, fale aisha le, sa'ama sani o nga ya'ita'u. O'tele o'ma'ala malama, ele mo'tu'ofu ma'ulusenga. Wa'ua o sa'uma'ita'u. Aae, ea'ise fofo'anga la'usunga pa'afapia'e fa'tau nu'uinga le fa'amo'e mo'e. To'fa'ola'ola aae. Eh, e fa'usia le'a fale aisha aae. Awa'a ele mufayo nga fa'aa. Te'utau ni aae a mai Tuzuila fa'aa tao'pe. Fa'anga awa'la ma'luu'ua, tao'anga tao'ula o'tu'ma'lo. O le, la'ufasili le'a, wa'ua le'us tanga tae fa'ango'ota. Ya a'ua te'fi'a fi'a aae. E'aile a'afai'tu'ula le, le ma'ua le'a. A fionga sen'to'a.
Thank you, Honorable Senator. If I may just, Senator, Tomiola had referred to the issue of refrigeration, but I think the, the point that you brought up is equally important. And that is the, there's a lack of ice available for the fishermen living in Manu'a. There were previous projects done to provide both ice and fuel, but unfortunately, I, I believe the implementation was not done properly. And I've been meeting with my deputy director as well as our Fisheries Division at the department. And as I spoke about earlier, we do have funds available now. And I believe a priority is to provide ice for our alia fishermen in American Samoa. So look forward to providing that very needed infrastructure for the small boat fishers of the territory.
Le sa'ua le'aya le, le tali'ala'usunga le'a u'inga le. Ele keshi, pa'le fuel le'a fa'anga e va'aa. Awa'a, masalo pe'tasi le va'aa aae. Ya'alu'e ave'a'ia, ya, ya, ya le fuel i, i Manu'a. Ya, fa'anga le'a taa'va'le pe'fa'anga le'a. Le va'fa'ango'ota ele lava le keshi. Re va'yasol'gei, o fa'alonga fo'ua. Wa'cancel le, le fuel delivery a, a le manu'tele i Manu'a. Ya o'tele o'lu'ape aisha afa'ma'ola aae. Fa'le tao'una'same'ole, o le a'fu'ala va'aa. A'ua, o fa'fita'ula'gei. Ya o'le fa'fo'anga fo'ua le, le ma'ma'ua, a fionga sen'to'a. Ya e'fa'ilanga awa'la aae. E'fisos'angi la'usunga aae. Awa'a e'tele mufayo nga e'fa'iala ngalwenga to'tas. A'itau mufayi'ina'ia. Mo'asifisos'angi a'uinga li tulanga le'a. Ya awa'la fa'amo'e mo'e mo'li'tumau'a ainga. Ele nga tae'ita'u a'ofu ma'ulusenga. Ya ma'la'fa'ala'ala va'aa kasila'ufasili le'a fi'a fa'ia tu'la'usunga. O'tele i'lu'ape'tasi le fi'a. E'a'ile, le Ila'ua, sa'ama ti'ute'ta'ile, e'ua ya'fi'a. E'tasi le fi'a le'a, Ila'ua.
I'm sorry, Honorable-
Fa'isinanga leva. Amo, wa'levanga, nama'luu'le, se'tu'ula'ua le fa'ala'ala ve. Le ka'ivilanga ya'le maya kua'sis, sa'pu'e ken'paula. O le insidinanga, le'asa'ua maya'unga maya. I, i, i leo leo mai lunga i, i ta'ile, ave'ala lo. Ya a'ua, tupu fa'ala'ala ve helicopter nga a'ua maya. Wa'fi'a, eh, ele, ele airforce. Ya ma'la'fa'fita'ula va'aa.
It's my father's older brother, Falanga Fulu.
Na'ngon'ia la fionga senkua, wa'anga tau.
A'ula'ua va'nuu'a. Naiten fa'mul'ula. E'ese fatanga na'ae, eh, fatama'ia ele manu'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua. Ma'le tul'ua, ma'le manu'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua. Ele to'fisapere aae. Ona o tulanga iyo, to'sete'mi'ua tao'ula fa'to'anga'te'va'ia ele'le'osa lulu. Ona turile manu'ua o le kolai. Ele'le'osa mangtang, e'nga'kuri'ua'le manu'ua. O le'aa'za'ua'ala e'fa'inga fo'ua ma'le manu'ua'ua'ua'ua. O fa'infakosa'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua. E'ese fa'kanga'anga ya o'kowe maye, eh, kapia'ima'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua. Fa'mul'ula.
Thank you, Honorable. I apologize, I don't have, it's a very good point that I, if you would please allow me a bit of time to work with the team at the department and look into addressing that issue. Ba'ma'li'ats.
Masalo'a, wa'ua o'ma'le, fasili ma'ua, fa'kuanga ne'ma'ka. Gok'la'ngon'ia. Fa'mesa'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua'ua. Yule'ula'anga ya, sume'la'ia, pa'ka'ula'ua'ua'ua'ua.
I'd like to thank Senate President, the Vice President, Chairman, and members of the committee. Very honored to appear before you and answer your questions this morning. I look forward to returning to serve our people of American Samoa. And I ask for your, your favor in allowing me to serve with the Department of Marine and Wildlife Resources. Wish you all a blessed day and thank you very much for the opportunity. Fa'tai lava.